Okay, like to call the inland wetlands Commission's regular meetings, or October twenty-third is the order. First order of business is introductions. Don't believe we have anyone on Zoom at this time?
That's correct.
Okay, Pat, you wanna go?
Pat Salhaw, alternate commissioner.
Greg Johnston. Assistant, whatever, commissioner.
Pat, paraport commissioner.
Danielle Monroe, alternate.
Nicholas Jordan, commissioner.
Dave McCollum, inland wetlands agent.
Mary Churchill, recording secretary.
Okay, thank you. Just one note that I believe I have to make at the beginning of every meeting now is electronic devices, please make sure we stowed them. If they have to be used, please announce why they are being used. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'd like to announce that tonight I'll be using my phone to look at the Google Drive for the application documents.
All right, when you do that, just let people know that's what you're using it for.
Okay.
Okay, no, just when you pick it up to you, you know. Okay. All right, Dave, do you have any amendments to the agenda for this?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry, I'm afraid I have three. The first of which is we received an inland wetlands application on Friday for seven Rockwell Road, that will be IWC dash twenty twenty-three dash N. Essentially for the regulated activities that are outlined in that violation under old business. The second will be I have some inland wetlands agents comments for you guys concerning a report that was generated for for you from West Cog. And the third, and this is just more of an oversight for me, is that I forgot to add public comments as an item on the agenda. So I would, I would greatly appreciate if the commission wouldn't mind adding those three items.
So comments and public comments go toward the end, right?
That's my comments and the public comments towards the end, that's correct.
All right, and then the seven Rockwell Road we put on the bottom of new business.
That'll be the last, that's correct, last item under new business.
Do you need a motion for that?
I do.
Okay, so I make a motion that we add to the agenda seven Rockwell Road, staff comments and public comments as well. Is there a second? Three seconds, all those in favor, somebody say aye. Aye, again. Enough staying.
I'm here, by the way.
Hey, Kevin.
Sorry about that, but Zoom decided to update today.
Yep, not everyone can have Comcast, so. Go ahead, you want it?
What was that? Oh, God, Kevin Seaman, commissioner.
Thank you.
David, yeah, I see, I have seven Rockwell Road available. It's going to shift it down now?
No, no, we'll, we'll get there.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So old business was seven Rockwell Road.
Right.
Now it's being shifted down to new business.
Yeah, gotcha. So, so what's, what's happening, Mr. Chairman, is, is had the applicant not submitted an application for tonight, that, that item would have effectively remained on the agenda, but because we do have an application now, it's, it's going to be the last item under new business.
Okay.
IWC dash twenty twenty-three dash N.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the first item on the agenda then would be site plan reviews, and there would be fifty-six Confish Hill Road.
Mike Mizuko is here.
Mike is on Zoom.
He's muted.
No, they, they got that with all three.
All three.
Yep, okay. Okay, so Mike, you want to take it away for, for Confish Hill?
Oh, sure. Good evening, for the record, Mike Mizuko, professional engineer, my office is in Danbury, representing the applicant. And Jim McManus is here too. We were both on the sidewalk on October fourth. And at that meeting, I, I did mention to the commission that the, there was a potential buyer for the lot, because it's obviously for sale. And they had a slightly different footprint, which I did modify and update and incorporated comments from staff. However, we hadn't received engineering comments at that point, and we did receive them this afternoon. And so that's kind of where we're, where we're at with the application. I know there was some questions about, you know, certain things about invasive species, lighting, and I can certainly, you know, walk through that. And Jim can weigh in on, on some of the other wetland questions. But for the most part, I went through the staff comments. And I either added notes or made modifications as appropriate for each comment. So you know, if you want, I can go through item by item, I don't know if you've got any specific questions about any of the comments on that staff report or even the engineering, again, we just got that this afternoon, so I've got to go through that, but our, our hope is to get, to get that addressed and respond to those engineering comments this week.
Yeah. David, is this your staff?
No, so what, what I'm, what I'm distributing now, and I, I apologize, Mr. Seaman, you, you don't have the benefit of, of being here in person. We just received comments from our consultant engineer this afternoon, and that's with a legal sized sheet of papers for those are from Todd Ritchie of SLR Consulting. I think, I think what Mr. Mizuko was saying, that he I've ever seen those this afternoon as well, and is looking to incorporate what Mr. Ritchie has in his review comments as part of the site plan that he has not finished revising. The other items that are in front of you are the report from the project soul scientist, Mr. McManus, who's here tonight. And I may have a single copy, and I apologize for only having one, but I can get it up on the screen of my staff report. So if, if anyone has any questions about any of those three things, just let me know, otherwise I would advise Mr. Mizuko, if you wouldn't mind just going through whichever, whichever site plan is, is more appropriate at this time.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, Dave, is any of those notations or information available currently on the Google Drive or not yet updated there?
Uh, so my comments and Mr. McManus's report are available on the Google Drive.
Yep.
The comments that we just received from SLR today, just with a short notice, they are not.
Okay.
Right, but just so everyone knows, for the next meeting, should you guys not decide on this tonight, they'll, they will be added to the Google Drive for that meeting.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Okay.
I totally understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
So David, I can share my screen?
Yeah.
And, and walk through just the revisions. Did you post that on the Google Drive or not yet, because it was?
I did not, I did not post either.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Let me just share my screen. Are you seeing a plan?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, good over here too.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we modified the house footprint slightly, it, it grew a little bit. I, I did have to do a slight modification to the size of the detention basin. But nothing, you know, it was just, it was very minor. I did go through the staff report letter at the time, because I had it. And I did show some lighting, obviously there'll be some floodlights here for the driveway in the backyard. Again, I don't, with this distance here, I don't think you're gonna, and you know, floodlighting is down lighting, just so people can get around their backyard without tripping over stuff. Don't see that as, as being an issue with regard to the wetlands. And you know, native buffer, you know, these are the concrete pads that we were walking around on the sidewalk. We would just remove them, the silt fence, that line hasn't changed. I did add a clearing limit line, because it's just a little bit different, I mean, obviously we have extended the silt fence to the property line as requested. However, it's not necessary that we clear all of that, so we don't necessarily say that the line of the hay bales is the clearing limit line. So I just added that line as just a, an additional layer of delineation as far as tree cutting. Uh, there was a comment about the construction sequence. And I guess that's something that the commission can discuss. We talked about extending, I extended the silt fence to the property lines. And the construction limit line is the limit of disturbance. And we did, you know, we do have that outcrop here, it, it's very minor, because if you look at the elevations, this highlighted contour here is let me get one second. There was a label, yeah, five-ten. So that, that highlighted contour is five-ten, and our garage, our garage slab is five-eleven and a half. So this area is going to be pretty much filled. So the extent that we need to remove rock there is, is very limited. Because we are raising this area up because the grade jumps up on this side, but more so on this side. So by elevating it, we just eliminate some issues with grading on either the left and the right side. But any rock, if there is some minor removal, it's, again, it'll be by by hammer or machine, it's not extensive by any stretch. We did add so the cotton fill that's in the regulated area would be mainly the cot, not so much where the garage is, but that's on a slab right here. But there'll be some cot here for the basement. And then some site fill in the backyard here, just to grade into the existing grade. So I did add I did add a table that showed the area of wetlands on site, upland review area. Uh, total regulated area, upland review area impacted. Wetland area impact, obviously nothing, because we're not doing anything down in that vernal pool. And just an approximate cotton fill within the regulated area. So whatever we take out of the basement, we'll just be putting in the backyard and grading, grading that area accordingly. There'll be a, a slight shift in you know, the watershed, because it's basically split across this area here. So some of this area that's in the back of the house will be, you know, additionally draining here, but it's, you know, you've got the concrete, so the offset, I mean, the difference is negligible. And if there's slightly more water running to the vernal pool, I'd rather have it that way than taking water away from it. And as far as the lawn, I would say that pretty much everything inside the construction limit line would be considered as the potential for having it being lawn. And I did talk about the, the watershed line. And it's would be slightly different than not, not this line here with the hay bales, but it would be the backyard eventually. And you know, felled trees, I know there were some felled trees in the back, we don't want to be touching anything beyond this construction limit line, hay bale line, we're not, we're not planning to do anything. Unless Jim thinks that there's some invasives that need attention, but that would all be done pretty much by hand, I believe, unless he, he instructs otherwise, but I'll let him talk about that. And then, yeah, that was item, uh, item comment number fourteen. And then I did add, I talked to Jim, and I did add his signature to you know, that, the wetlands line is he sees it. My signature disappeared there, that was weird. It was just there, hang on. Wow. Anyway, there is a signature for Jim there to say that the wetlands does the limit that he believes that they are substantially correct. So with that, I mean, I the, the engineering comments, nothing earth shattering there, we just got to go through and comment that, on them and, and make some minor corrections to that plan, but other than that, that's kind of where we are with the current state of the application and the revised plans, and I'll, I'll let Jim just speak a little bit on uh, the invasives, if he would so kindly, Jim, please.
Please, thank you. Uh, for the record, Jim McManus, certified professional soil scientist, Jim in Wetland Consulting Services, obviously the Newtown. Most of the folks here were on the walk, right? Pretty sure. So just to bring you back, most of the invasives, which were eunomis or burning bush, fire bush. They were lots of barberry and bittersweet. And not that it's an invasive, but ton of poison ivy. And then as you go beyond the limits, and you get into where the wetlands were. The, there are, the main culprit out there is clumps of barberries scattered about. I'm starting to change my tune about invasives. We, we kind of win a battle, but we lose the war. And we go out there and come and then two or three years later, it's going exactly like it does today. Or you take a mini and pull more by the, by the roots. Like then we're in the upland review area, drying the many through. But I don't know what to do, I mean, we can cut them, not like using chemicals, we do have a nice vernal pool, it's not, it's not, the vernal pool is more here and way out in the back, but still, do we really want to be spraying dumps when it's just barberry? I get it, I mean, I, 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 I don't want to see them either, but how do we do it to where it's not just an exercise, there actually is some value to it. I mean, a lot of this is all going to go, so that's the bulk of the invasives on the site are in the disturbed area. We saw the concrete slabs and some of the other soil disturbances, some of the old rock foundations are there. Well, that's all covered up with poison ivy and bittersweet and things like that. So there's a few things we can do with the I mean, there's protocols, I mean, we all have all kinds of protocols, Nico, you know, you, you see those things on Deep's website. We can do that. We can pull some of them with a mini. That way we get rid of them all, that, that won't, that's not going to come back, but I don't recommend we just go around the entire site beyond the limit, beyond the silt fence limit or hay bale limit, and start trying to pull every clump of bitters, of Japanese barberry. But that's, we can have a discussion, that's just my opinion. Uh, it's not horrible, there is, it's not great either, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna lie to you, but it's not a C, it's not like, it's a, you look past the, you look past the hay bales, and the only thing you see is a wet area like we saw, and, and you, you saw it, it's not like that's the only thing you see, if it was all in bloom, would be this big green mound of Japanese barber, you get clumps, and they go all the way around, we didn't walk all the way back, there was really no need to. But they go all the way around. But they're not everywhere. But they're there. The good thing is, the most, the bulk of the stuff will be here, and the person who lives here eventually apparently, you know, theoretically will maintain that, we won't have those invasives anymore, because you'll mow them, you'll pull them, you'll do whatever. And then back here, your mother nature's going to be kind of doing what she does, I mean, there are some down trees, I'm sure there's going to be more eventually, those red maples out there are not new, they're getting up in age. We can discuss it, but that's kind of my thoughts about because I kind of want it all to end here, right? And then let Mother Nature do what she does back there. We do have a fair amount of like bitter, uh, Japanese barber. Right?
Hey, hey, Jim?
Yeah.
Would there be any benefit to planting of some, you know, trees along, say, that silt fence that might, you know, much, you know, mature and eventually maybe choke that choke that out?
No.
No?
Because by the time the trees get big enough to get the, bring, because it's pretty shady in there now, it's not like it's an open canopy.
Okay, I just thought it was open through that little stretch there.
There is, there is some open canopy, but it's not open enough. It's not so open that the understory is prolifically growing, it's not, it's, it, uh, but we can add, uh, yeah, what's my direction? What's my direction, Mike? If you go toward the wetland is what, from the, from the silt fence, that would be north, north?
North is towards the, from the silt fence directly towards the pond.
Yeah, so if you were to add some trees and some understory shrubs beyond that. So beyond this, so between these flag seventeen and eighteen?
Yeah.
Some, add some, uh, trees and shrubs between the silt fence barrier and then up, uh, sorry, wetland flag seventeen and eighteen, we could some there. Uh, kind of will help maybe control invasives near the house? You know, near the backyard, and maybe add, act as a little bit of a we really don't want you to go beyond that, kind of those planted trees and trees.
Yeah, I was thinking more that there might be some benefit to it.
Well, well, bittersweet, I keep calling it bitter, Japanese barber does pretty well. Uh, in this, in this situation, but however, there's a really big broad fat bush, we could pull that, and it's right next to the line.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
And then we could re-enterplant with some shrubs and some few trees, red maples, cirque maples, things like that. We could do that and sort of kind of add that as a little buffer from the property or to the development to the wetland. You do that. There's a really big one, I saw it, I was out there today just to get, remember what was actually growing, remember I, I hung on one pink flag?
Yep.
I hung that on a bar, on a Japanese barber. So that's a big, that was a pretty hefty bush, we could get rid of that one, that's easy, we just take the x-ray, go on. And then replant. That's a, that's a plan, we could do that. If you want to add some other stuff out in the back, Mike, that's up to, that's up to, you, you, I mean, we, we could, it's not, I don't know if it's necessary, because it's forested back there as it is.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of, as you remember, it's got a lot of, uh, like, uh, sedges and fescues growing, it's not really an understory, per se.
Anything that can be planted that would negatively impact the barber?
No. Other than removing.
And the seed dispersment with the critters back there, they're, they're just going to?
Really, you're going to lose the battle.
Can I, can we chime in or?
No, please.
How come, well, how come we're talking about invasives? Or how come?
Because the engineer tossed it on.
Okay, okay.
It was brought up in the staff comments.
Staff comments, and the, I think that SLR mentioned it too?
No, it was, uh, Dave, Dave.
Yeah, Dave mentioned it.
Because unless like the homeowner wanted you guys to get rid of them or something. They can deal, they, like you said, they can probably deal.
Yes, but usually not always you folks, but a lot of commissions always want us to come in with an invasive species plan, how we're going to deal with it. And I'm getting, it's getting more and more difficult, because the plan is you go in and we try to do things, and then five years later, it looks like we never there.
If your invasive species plan is non-invasive to the wetlands, maybe in its, in its like practices, like, like you said, like machines, like if you guys were going to go and do it, take the barber out by hand, like from the root, like cool, but like, I'm not about to make you do that, like the homeowner.
You can destroy the whole.
I don't, and I'm not speaking for this.
I, I can speak more to the concepts from my comment, when it's appropriate.
And then, okay, cool. But the idea of planting some stuff there, oh, I was going to ask Mike or, and, and you, Jim, if what the distance is from the wetland to, I guess, the disturbed area of the lawn.
It's about, what was it, Mike, S? Well, we met.
An inch equals thirty feet, is it thirty feet to the line there?
Well.
It's about thirty-five feet to the line.
Thirty-five feet, but you remember, the, the, the area of the wetland that's actively breeding is well beyond that, it's out in here, and then the big, big, big that's the raft is way, way out here.
Okay. So if you think, you guys are talking about planting trees?
Well, that would be in here.
So do you, if the soil there, Jim, is that suitable for mature shade tree, like a tall tree?
Sure.
Would it hold, or is it?
Sure.
So it's not wetland soil, it's not going?
No, 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 the wetlands, it would be between, it would be between the proposed, uh, not proposed, but the limit of disturbance to the wetland line, which is flag seventeen and eighteen, and in that gap, we would add some understory and a few trees.
So the soils there are
moderately well-drained.
Rocky?
There're going to be some rocks, but not, not.
Good for trees.
Good for trees.
Wetland soils that are?
Not wetland soils, if they were wetland soils, we would plant the appropriate tree, but they're
No, like a smaller thing?
Yeah.
But also, okay, cool.
And they can't, well, let's put it this way, it better not be wetland soils. Wasn't flagged.
Right. Um, I, yeah. And then as far as planting stuff, it, it would be good anyway, it sounds like if we can run with this, to put some things in there that would kind of provide a natural buffer from the lawn, I guess, to the wetlands maybe, but then they would, they could also, if they were the right species of tree, evergreen of some kind, maybe broadly evergreen or mixed planting to, then you're solving his light issue slash power light, the, any light pollution issue, without even thinking about, then we don't have to worry about what kind of bulbs they're using, what kind of lamps they're using. Then I don't need to ask for a photometric plan.
We're seventy-five feet, Mike, from the wetland boundary to the, to the spotlight or to the floodlight for the, for the safety of the homeowners getting into the house.
From the wetlands line to the, to the floodlight, you're about seventy-five feet, correct?
You were in more about the driveway?
No, I'm thinking about the, somebody, because I know there's different manufacturers of floodlights, like I've got a flood on my house, and my driveway is not like a a lamp, there's no hood on it, it doesn't point the light down, it spreads it, floods it, you know, it's on intermittently with motion, and sometimes it's on all the time, it's not good. But it will be worse around vernal pool wetland to have that, so if we do plant trees there sometime, or a vegetative buffer, I think that solves the issue, and then we don't have to worry about homeowners.
Yep, but don't forget, Nico, that it's, it's greater than seventy-five feet.
Which is
I don't know, I mean, pretty, and we're talking out here, where, where the critters are starting to do their business, and then way in the back. So we're talking hundreds of feet.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, which kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah, I mean, we could, uh.
Anyway, so it would just
Hey, I don't mind, uh, green giants, you know.
Do you know?
I'm more creative, I'd like to do different.
Put a green, put a green giant line here, and then you, you interplant with more major stuff.
Roto is probably holly.
Tin oaks and, uh, you know, and then I like my berries, but the berry, those two.
Do you want, would you diamond on this, on the landscape choices?
I mean, we're not, it's not going to be a massive plant, it's going to be scattered about the trees.
No, no, but anything
Yeah, I mean.
Preferably native, but it's
Yeah, I'm going to just tell you what we're going to do.
Yeah, that's fine, I know nothing about type of tree.
What do you think, or did you not specifically want to block the sightline from the lawn to the, to the?
I just, no, I, I don't know if I want to block the sightline, I, I think, I don't want to block it, I just wanted that, I just wanted to fill in a little bit and kind of discourage the potential owner from just kind of pushing back.
Yeah, you're not creating a hedge, you're creating a barrier.
Fair.
But it can be mixed, it could frame the place well, but it would help to, anything there would defray the light, like nicely, and kind of give them a separate
I'm not overly
I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, am I overly excited about the light pollution on this particular site? But yeah, I hear.
I just don't know what kind of light they're going to have on the house, and I don't feel like asking, and like, how are we going to monitor that?
You're not done.
We can't monitor.
So this seems like a good solution where we don't ever have to worry about it.
Yeah.
It's like, fine, they have their space. The man is on their space.
I, I don't, I don't want to abruptly insert.
No, that's it.
I, I, Tim, is there others, is there other stuff that we can move on to, because I think
Anything goes wrong.
Okay. Because I think a lot of what I would have to say can possibly address the extremes that we're having right now.
That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
Anyone else on the commission have any questions? On this thing?
Not at this time.
Go ahead, Kev.
Uh, not at this time.
Yeah, I have a couple, but I'll hold them until Dave, I got a feeling he's gonna ask him.
Okay.
Well, it's better I do, go ahead.
I, I'll, I'll try, I, I'm not sure if I'm on my meter, but I'll, I'll do my best. Um, no, no discredit to Mr. Mizuko. Um, for the plans that he has put before you guys. I, I, um, most of what I have written in my comments. Are more for um, the wetlands side of things than anything else. Um, most of what Mr. Mizuko has put on the site plans, it's housekeeping, it's items that. You are, as a commissioner accustomed to having. I can fill analysis areas of how can your viewing tag, the like. Um, I, I, I dived or um. I shouldn't say that, the, the comments that I put on there are, are for your benefit. That, there are things that I write as food for thought for you, more so than anything else, so, so. I just, I just want to be clear. No, no one's responding to these. It, it's, it's not for me, it's, it's for you, okay? So I just, I just want to make sure that's clear. Um. We, we could get into um, the, the limit of disturbance and um, the watershed map. Those are pretty straightforward. Why I have those in, in my comments, I, it, it's worth it for you to know. That the lion's share, if not all of the water. That is going to otherwise be alternate on this site, isn't going towards the Vernal Pool. Um, your roofing drains, your footing drains, they're all directed to the stormwater management system that's out front on this property.
So that's one of the questions I had.
Yeah.
Going to the front now, I couldn't really see the sightlines, the, the.
I'm not sure, what, what do you mean, what are you asking?
Undeveloped, which way is the water going?
Same way. Right, so, so the, the, the pre and post. Watershed drainage maps, they, they really don't show any significant change.
That's what I was asking, okay.
Part of what. Was written in the comments was, um, if there is a change. Show where that is and it correlates with the limit of disturbance, so that way you guys know. That all of your close. Um. Watershed disturbed area, i- it, it, it's not changing where water's going today anyway. So it's, it's really a moot point. I, I just, it's worth you guys having that clarification.
Yep.
Um, and, and the same goes with whether or not rock is going to be removed from this site where. Uh, displaced material is going, it's understood that this uh, house will have a basement. Um, but that excavated material has to go somewhere, so you're gonna want to know where that is. Um. The, the biggest item. I guess that, that remains that.
Isn't there like three stockpiles on the plant?
Right, right, um. But those, but those are just during construction.
Right.
Those, those stockpiles aren't staying once the house is built.
No, but then you go by the count to plants of the finish.
Right, right, um. The, the item that I think Mr. Jordan was getting into exchange with uh, Mr. McManus and Mr. Mizuko about. Was um, plantings. There is uh, one organization, the Connecticut Invasive Plants Working Group. In- invasive species are, are there in a MO, it wasn't implied. Um, they have um, removal methods and schedules for each. Um, of the typical invasive species that you see here in Connecticut. Like your Japanese barberry, your bittersweet, your mortiflor rose. Garlic mustard, what have you. Uh, I, I don't want to speak for how effective each of those methods are, but the bottom line is I, I, I can't imagine they would have come up with that. Schedule. If they didn't work. Um, so, yeah, you, you, you could say it's, it's six of one dozen or. However, that expression goes, um. For tr- trying to remove them, um, and, and it's. Invasive species removal, it's not an invitation to have it occur on the entire property. I, I, I would agree with that. Because you're, you're only focusing on. The area where the disturbance is taking place or the extent that's shown on the plan anyway. Um, if you are going to have plants that are put in there, native plants. That are meant to displace those invas- invasive species, it's, it's worth. The commission considering those plantings be the same or in, in, or in behind, so, so if you're removing. Um, like a Japanese barberry. Maybe it's worth considering like a spice bush. Or, or a button bush, a, 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 a species that's perennial, that's herbaceous. That occupies the same area of canopy. Cause I don't, I don't know if you guys remember when we were out there, that Japanese barberry. Wouldn't care, it doesn't make any difference if it's, if it's growing right next to a tree. Or otherwise it would be able to be changed. It's, if it's in an area where it can propagate, it will do so. Um, so if, if you're really trying to address. Where it is, and if you're, and if you want to have some kind of buffer that isn't invasive species. Just consider having something to be planted in kinds. Rather than something that's gonna occupy entirely different. Strata. Canopy for a plant.
But. He, he said you're not replacing the barberry with this, the plantings that we were talking about would be just more of a barrier. To the, and that wouldn't. Effect. The barberries.
Well, well, it's, it's not a barrier, it's, it's a, it's a buffer.
Right.
Right, so.
But it's not affecting one another.
There's no, there's no foolproof way.
Right.
To prevent the invasive from reestablishing itself, but if, but if you are going to have a disturbance take place in that area.
Right.
And if, and if it's this commission's MO to encourage it and to encourage native species where possible.
But this, I believe the discussion was, I may be wrong. It was that, the two discussions, do we? Ask to get the. Invasive species removed and the other discussion was having. Basic barrier more for light and for use.
Yeah, well.
Separate from this, because in order to get rid of the bases, you have to go in and.
Yeah.
Pull them basically with a machine.
Well, yeah, the, the, the lighting is, isn't entirely separate.
And that's what I'm saying, so the trees is different than the.
Yeah, the, the, the buffer, the planting buffer, it, it's, it's not meant to.
Right.
Be your screen.
Okay.
For your lighting.
Right.
Um.
Okay.
And, and the comment about the lighting, i- it was just more so that the commission knew where it was, I mean, you, you don't have the benefit of having a lighting plan.
Right.
You don't know necessarily what purpose those. Lights and their position on the house before, if, if those are emergency lights. They, they have, they have to come on.
Right.
For whatever event may prompt them to, and they, and they have to stay on, so you can't.
But that's why I was thinking it would make sense just to have, to, to do both of what you're saying by having your vegetative buffer as you're calling it. Uh, also act as your screen, as you're technically calling it, which is fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so have that be your, you know, mixed native. Cool, uh, you know, mixed multi-season, uh, you know, native evergreen, if you can swing it and uh, you know, you've got where. Uh, and you mentioned button bush, or you could do mountain world, or you could do uh. Witch hazel native.
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if there's a plant that. Comes to the commission's mind that would better serve that purpose of doing screening and being a buffer. By all means, make the suggestion. Those, those are just two off the cuff that came to mind.
Button bush, mountain world, uh, Alex Opacka.
But two things. Again, we're talking. Invasive species and then we're talking. Plantings that had nothing to do with the whole discussion of invasion species, because that's just a bear, because of the light and. And. I don't need light on the plan, um, for the back of a house, I figured there's gonna be a spotlight on there at some point, if they have kids or something, you could say it's gonna point down. But as we get older, that spotlight's gonna shine my backyard.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's.
How I look at it, yeah, well, and if you have a barrier there, that.
The, the prompts for this whole dialogue taking, are occurring in the first place is because of the, it's because of what type.
Right.
Of wetland resources in the past, it's a Vernal Pool.
Right.
They are, they are. For my experience anyway, your most uncommon resource.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of wetlands.
Okay.
And the one that. And. Mr. McManus, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but if, if, if there's an impact. That would otherwise be made by developing on that property, they are, they are the most fragile type of resource.
Right.
Actually mitigated.
But what we're looking at is to see if anything is affecting it and right now.
Though there's no, there's no direct impact.
And that's what we're asking, right, right. So I'm trying to figure out. Why we would remove the invasive species from there.
Well, be, because it's, it's within your limit of disturbance.
Hmm.
I, the, the, I, the idea, I'm, I'm.
No, no, I know, it's in there, I'm talking as you get closer to Vernal Pool. Why would you go in?
I, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Because I would have a machine in.
I, I'm.
I don't think we want.
Another one poisoning.
This is, this is why, this is why this is all practiced by what's within the limit of disturbance.
Alright.
The, it, it, an application before you isn't an open invitation for you to take the entirety of the invasive population, because she's out. You're only talking about the area where the disturbance is occurring.
Okay, right.
I mean, if the developer wants to do it for the homeowner.
Not in the, that's the, I believe, no.
Do they want to do it? I mean, if I was gonna buy a new property, it would be cool if it was rid of the invasive.
But they're not gonna do it, I, I know, I need to pull the map back up, they're not gonna do it past those hay bales. They're gonna take care of it for the rest of the yards that they're gonna mow anyway, and they're not gonna be there.
Some of those hay bales, we're gonna probably remove ninety-eight percent of.
Sorry, but why are we talking about this?
That's what I'm trying.
We're talking, we, the original discussion was, what are we gonna do with the invasives that I thought that may be extending being on the hay bales to the north? And I just said.
You guys want to take them home?
No, I, that's what I said, I said, I don't think it's warranted or maybe at this particular site. Great idea to start trying to take out these clumps of Japanese barberry.
Prior to, prior to the hay bale, they. Hay bales. Yes, that's gonna be taken out, you got machines in there, they're gonna be gone.
Well, it's gonna be maintained lawn, it's gonna be hardscape, it's gonna be driveway, it's gonna be house, so.
The hay bale.
I think you leave it alone.
Leave it alone and plant the barrier.
Get rid of that one big Ja- uh, Japanese barberry and maybe do interplantings, we'll figure out what we interplant with. Within the hay bales to the wetland boundary and that, that little swath.
Yep.
And then call it a day, and I believe the rest of it.
Nice garden, I mean, you could do a nice little native screening garden there.
Well, I mean, that's what you want to do, Nico.
Well, wouldn't the homeowner want that?
I don't know, we don't know who the homeowner is. So, so this is, this is. He might be in New York City, he doesn't want any of it. This is more of a, it's more like a grocery, for me than, than anything else. Actually, I. Should, should the commission interpret? That the area. Between the house and the Vernal Pool will all be manicured lawn? Mike?
No.
No.
Okay, okay.
Should we interpret that between the house and the hay bale?
A house and a hay bale.
Oh, okay. Right.
Beyond that, no, good. That's the plan, that's why I want to plant a little. Plants to, to, to kind of discourage the former, uh, the, the.
Exactly.
Potential homeowner. I'm kind of like saying, eh, maybe my yard ends here.
Well, it's a nice barrier, is what it is.
We're gonna use it as a barrier, not.
Thirty minutes, I agree.
So we're in agreement, right?
Yes.
For the first time ever?
Ever.
All right.
Cool. Well, the next thirty things, okay. We're all saying the same thing, okay?
Yes.
Um, if you could put. What plantings that would be.
Yes, we'll do that, Mike, we'll put a little something on the plan.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Is that the point you were trying to make?
That, that's, yeah, a- as, as long as the commission's hashed out that discussion to your satisfaction, that's, that's all that matters.
Okay.
Um, just, just, you're welcome, and just to reroute things. Um, I, I think it's, it's worth the commission, um. Having a finalized version of these site plans. Before you. Um, having something in writing from Mr. Ritchie saying that he is satisfied. Um, with the responses to Mr. Mizuko's comments. Um, I would imagine I'll do the same for mine, when, when Mr. Mizuko produces that, because I, I think it's gonna be. Um, you'll give one response for both myself and.
And that's what I always try to do. You know, it's just unfortunate that we just, you know, got the engineering comments, otherwise I would have incorporated them all, that's.
Right.
I don't like doing full revisions.
And we wouldn't have proven until we got both people saying.
Right, so, so from, from a timing perspective, and, and I, I do apologize for. The engineering comments coming so late. If, if they could have, if they could have come to sooner, it would have. Um.
Yeah, sure.
Commission doesn't see. Or foresee any other issues arising. From what's been discussed tonight, it may be worth. The six of you. Coming up, um. Um. Coming up with a consensus. For how you would want to decide on this application at your next meeting.
I just have a couple more questions.
Oh, then. Sure, I'm sorry, don't let me interrupt.
And I know I have the, it's a, he pulled it back up.
Yeah, the site plan, okay.
So Mike, I know, I know it's engineered and I know you're gonna say yes, but I have to ask anyway. That's a lot of impervious soil there from the roof, from the driveway. From the yard, all going into that uh, detention basin there?
Yes.
Is that gonna hold a big storm? Or what happens?
We are, we are required. To do the two through one hundred year storm events, so. The answer to that question is yes, it'll hold a one hundred year storm event, which I think is. Eight inches of rain in twenty-four hours.
We got that last week, yeah.
Yeah.
The uh.
No, we didn't.
No.
New York City.
No, my house is.
We've had a lot of rain this year, but we haven't had that kind of rain, and we've had some. Some intense. Uh, high intensity, short duration storm events, which. You know, when you look at those events, they are pretty severe, I mean, there's, some of them are considered twenty-five year events. Even though they only last maybe a couple hours, so. Yeah, and the, and, and the basin is designed to hold the. Water quality volume, so you get that like basically one inch of. Rain before there's any outlet, yeah, it's, it's all, it's, it's designed. It's, it's designed excessively for sure.
Sure.
Do you know offhand, Mike, what we got in some of these recent storms, like what New York City got?
Well, I can tell you, we had. It was a few weeks ago, it was, it was severe storm in the morning, we got like two inches of rain, I think in an hour and a half, that's. You know, again, if you look at over a twenty-four hour period, it's, it's not a lot, it's basically less than a two-year storm event, but. If you look at the intensity of the rain for that short duration. When you chart that out, it's probably more like a twenty-five year event.
So my question for you, um. I'm looking at the detention basin across from one of the, I call it splash pad or rip pad, whatever. Is that like an overflow outlet towards the street, is that?
That's just an emergency, so.
Right.
This thing is designed for a hundred year storm event, so anything above the hundred year, obviously. So our limits are a hundred year storm event, which. You know, last year or a year and a half ago was only twenty-five year. So now we're designing for a hundred year. And that's just an emergency overflow, God forbid the outlet control, the. Pipe got clogged or something like that, you, you need to have some means of. Directing any potential. Emergency flow.
Right, and the, the water into the tension basin is gonna basically stay in there till it soaks into the ground?
Well, not necessarily, for smaller storm events. For that water quality volume, yes, it will sit in there and, and disperse into the ground. But beyond that, which is, you know, again, the water quality volume is basically in, in, an inch of runoff of the impervious areas. That will stay in there, but then beyond that, then you're gonna start metering it out through the outlet control device, and. The basin's supposed to handle the hundred year storm event by design.
And I guess that's a question I'm asking, I'm not seeing an outlet, I see two inlets that look like coming from the driveway.
All right, so let me, can I just?
Which one am I reading wrong? I see one coming off the rip pad in the driveway, and then one that looks like it goes up towards the house to the gutters.
Correct, but if you look at, if you, if you look at, there's a, a leader going between F and I and Caffey Shill Road.
I don't see it.
If you look between F and I and Caffey Shill Road.
I see a line.
There's a line, a leader going to a pipe. There's a call out.
That's why I was thinking with sheet flow overflow, that's your, that's your exit pipe, so to speak.
Correct.
And that's go straight onto Caffey's Hill?
Yeah, it goes out, it is a catch basin out, just to the east of the driveway.
Okay, I see that.
There's a six inch SDR thirty-five going into that catch basin. So that's just the outlet control device, so that'll be metering out the water. In those storm events that exceed the water quality volume.
So, Mike, the, the outlet of that, is that sheet flow on Caffey's Hill Road to the drain, to the. Uh, catch basin, or is that solid line like a four inch pipe or something to that?
Well, it's a six inch pipe, but there's a four point seven inch outlet control orifice.
Okay.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I think it's worth the commission, Mister Mizuko, do you mind highlighting the regular, the limit of the regulated open review area again?
Uh, it's going.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just so the commission knows, your, your wetland line is here, everybody see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, and your, and your open review limit area is here, it essentially splits the air, the house in half. So, anything that's occurring in this area, I guess it would be to the south?
Yes.
If I'm getting that correct?
Correct, yes.
That's beyond this commission's.
However, the water from there is going there, which we established, so I wanna, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Question, because what we're doing there is affect, A is affecting B. If B wouldn't be affected by A, I wouldn't be asking. Like if all of a sudden that detention basin was only taking the driveway water, I wouldn't ask, but you're taking water from. Top of the driveway and the house itself.
Sure, but, but this is why you refer to the pre and post watershed drainage maps. And for all intents and purposes, those areas are remaining the same. So, so.
But right now, it's not using a detention basin to absorb the water, it's using dirt.
Yeah, that, that's, that's true.
Right, and then, in this, this, uh, engineer's report, it says something about. Play being about two feet down, that's why I'm curious where the outlet is. Cause it's not gonna absorb that.
Yeah.
And that's why I was asking. Okay, um. The other question I have, and Dave's gonna tell me, I'm not allowed to ask, but I'm asking anyway, uh, you're moving the well?
No.
Is that because of where the septic is?
Well, there's an old well there that. You know, I don't know when it was put in, but that's down by the front there. Near the property line, that's being abandoned because of the septic system.
Okay, that's what I feared.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that questions it, yeah, just because the proposed well is for the.
Yeah, that didn't change, I think there's an old hand dog well, there's, will look like maybe an old foundation on the property line there, where that. You know, when we did the sidewalk.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was an old well capped off, if I remember correctly.
And, yeah, over on, yeah, it's an old pile, um. And, oh, just one last thing, and I know I've asked this before and I never remember, the bow ties, what are those? Right in the corner, basically of the houses in the front, looks like bow tie.
Test pits.
Oh, those are test pits, those are deep holes.
Soil.
Okay.
For the septic system design.
Okay, and then, I'm not allowed to ask about the driveway, never mind.
Well, it's, it's something you're not allowed, it's, it's just, it's, it's.
On this, it mentions two and a half degree pitch, and there it's a twelve degree.
No, he's talking about the cross slope on the driveway. To make sure it's super elevated, so the water gets directed to the yard drain. That we have on the driveway on the western side.
Okay.
Yeah. This, Mister Richie did these comments, he was kinda doing them twofold, one, one for. Um, your benefit as in the wetlands. And the, the second is just for a, a, a standard engineering review, because if there were no. In the wetlands on this property, an engineering review would be needed anyway, so that's, that's part of why those comments are folded in.
Okay, so last question, the swale on the east side, has that been put on the plans?
No, not yet, we just got these comments this afternoon, so.
Yep, okay.
That's one of the things I have to go through and make provisions for.
Okay. Anyone else on the commission have any questions?
Cool.
Not here, I'm good.
I got, oh, thanks, sorry. Um, new, new single site light, I'm looking at the site plan, I just see something written here that I was just wondering what, what it is. It says new single site light fifteen foot high, referred to in actual completely detailed. It's in like the northeast quadrant, corner.
By the vermicole.
Yeah. East of the vermicole, oh, it's not on that one. It's on my, well, it's on my, um, plan here.
Probably the draft plan, I just. Just wanted to show us, uh, on the legend, but also just show some possible locations for some. Flood lighting for the area of the driveway and the backyard.
Oh, okay, so it's written in next to the, next to the wetland. But is it, I can't, I just couldn't tell if it's like pointing to something, or, or what that refers to, it says.
Yeah, that's, I, again, it was, it's a draft, I.
Okay.
Move that into the legend area, but if you look on the. If you look on the corner of the garage towards the wetlands, you'll see some lighting symbols.
Oh, got it, yeah.
Yeah, and then on the garage, same thing.
Right.
So I just, I didn't realize that that was still kind of in the, I gotta move that. I mo- I did put it to the legend, I just didn't erase that, cause I brought it in from someplace else.
Cool. Um, so did we actually solve or the lighting or the wetlands issue with the planting buffer?
You're gonna give us a plan.
Yeah, or do we need to specify like the kind of light that those are?
And, and again, I think with, you know, standard like, you know, hundred watt bulb, flood lighting bulbs, you're not gonna. The, the foot candles at that, at that point are gonna be zero anyway.
You could do both, if that would make you more comfortable, you could specify the light and we could do the plantings.
Um. Yes.
I think, I think the planting's an important barrier more than. It is trying to limit the light, I don't think that that's really the issue, I think that it's more important to maybe establish a little. A line there or. Uh, I don't say buried, but at least like a delineation to say, hey, you know what? Let's not go beyond this with our, our lawn.
Um, that's what I thought too, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Any tales? Okay, um, I believe they would like a. Opinion as to the way this commission is leaning towards approval or denial of.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's, it's a suggestion that I'm making, if, if the commission is so comfortable with what they've presented so far tonight. I could have a draft resolution prepared for the next meeting. But, but only upon the six of you coming to a consensus for one.
Okay, so, um, when we start, uh, with Kevin, Kevin, how are you feeling towards this application?
Uh, based on the information with the buffer that they're proposing, as long as that's in the draft resolution of approval. Uh, as a stipulation, I'm comfortable leaning towards approval of the, uh, uh, having him bring a draft resolution of approval.
Yeah, I agree with the adding the muffler discussion in there, and with the plantings.
Yeah. Need to approve. Okay. I would definitely lean towards approval, but I would like to see the plantings on the plan. Doesn't necessarily have to be in the, like stipulation, as long as it's on the plan.
I, I think the applicant hasn't, has intent to do that.
Yep.
That is correct.
Yeah, perfect.
And again, I'm not familiar with Creighton, though Nico is, so, well, if you review that, that's the next thing and. They're comfortable with it, and the rest of the board are comfortable, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, approval.
Nico? I'm leaning toward approval as well, um. Just to specify the other government's native evergreen and deciduous, you know, on border, wetland border planting there.
Okay. So you have your direction guidance?
Yep.
That works for you?
And, um, just as clarification, you guys, this, this site plan review will continue. At your next regular reading, that would be on November twenty-seven. Um, your sixty-five day review period doesn't require, uh, doesn't expire until the twenty-ninth, so you have time. Um, so a draft resolution of approval will be prepared for you at that meeting.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, uh. Next order of business is new business, that would be, uh, forty-two Nashville Road?
That's correct.
Hmm.
This is the first of three applications you guys have brought up in the meeting. For that are on the agenda for.
That was a question I had, I have for us.
What's that?
What the regulations are in our regulations about concerning the acceptance or not to like petitions.
Okay.
I'm gonna run, that's my advice.
Then, um, I only have one copy to put down this. Uh, just so you know, this, these are the four copies that I have, I need all four of these back, if you don't mind, so just make sure you don't get them messed up.
Right on.
So far for, uh, Severn Rock Road, are you, are you gonna be out long, Nico?
No, you can't, if you're gonna leave, you gotta let us know. We gotta adjourn if that's the case.
Looking to adjourn?
No, you need, no, no, it's a recess, do you need to take a?
I have a recess to use the restroom?
Mm-hmm, okay, we'll make them, do any emotion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we take a five minute recess.
Uh, there's a motion for me to second.
I second.
Say aye, no, Nico, sit, hold it.
Okay.
Aye.
Hold it, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, I bring the, do I have to bring it back in session, I bring it back in session?
The time is eight eleven.
Okay, and the agenda in front of us right now is forty-two Nashville Road.
Yes, so right before we went to recess, I was handing out the commission copies on.